I think we're gonna get started. It's 4:30, sorry.
Today is Wednesday, June 26th, and this is a special school board meeting. Janet, could you call the meeting to order dual call?
Charles Blacklands.
Here.
Pete Campbell.
Here.
Tom Haglund.
Here.
Zooker.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
Here.
Can we do that again, please?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for this. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
A first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Blacklands. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And is there a motion to approve the minutes for the regular school board meeting on June 10th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Haglund. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
I don't wanna see that one in there.
Yeah. Okay, we have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Nystrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, site reports. Mercy and Lane, you talk to us about the preliminary budget report, please.
I'm a second.
These are really gonna be Mercy primarily, it's just I was the backup.
But you were on here, so I gotta give you some more.
I think I got deleted.
Oh, there it is. Perfect.
Thank you.
There it comes. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mercy. Thanks for coming.
Yeah. You guys have to suffer through this, cuz I'm kinda doing this on the fly. She's got back today.
Okay.
Um, so, our preliminary budget for next year, um, as you all know, we start with the revised budget from 1819. So that is this first, the, I should start with that full document is quite lengthy. So the PowerPoint is just kind of the high, highlights of that. But if you have any questions in the document that I don't cover, please let me know. So our starting point is the revised budget as of 1819, the unassigned was 638,000 deficit. Then, um, we go, look at our assumptions. So for revenues, we put in a 2% increase, which did come to fruition with the state. That's great. Um, increase in enrollment, we had a, adjusted pupil units of 50.3. And that's based on the projection model that we input all of our data and they look at, um, the child count births from, uh, that year. And look at what should we have for kindergarten numbers, um, all the way through 12th grade. And then the special ed, I worked with the co-op, and that's a 4.7% increase we'll see for special ed reimbursement based on the new formula. And there, we had the, an update that Title I could potentially be decreasing 15% for Title I funding and Title II would be 10%. It's not confirmed yet, but we do have that in there just in case. There was a .8% decrease in compensatory revenue. That's totally based on our free and reduced counts. Our free and reduced counts were down, um, this year compared to the prior year. And it's always one year behind. So our October 1 free and reduced counts for this year are actually compensatory revenue for next year. And then there was a 9.6% increase in the levy with, there's all sorts of things in there between, um, the referendum. And it's also based on student count as well, which attributed to that. So this is the enrollment projections we had, right? Um, at revision one, we did have it where pre-K through 12. We're hoping that we end the year with 6,625. I do know today was the, um, one of the days for state submissions. Hoping to get me some numbers. So at the next board meeting, I hope to say yes or no if we did get close to that number. And then we put that into our, the projection model. And for next year, we're looking at 6,667.6 pre-K through 12 students. And then that translates into the, um, adjusted pupil units, the 50.3.
Can I just say a quick question on that?
Sure.
Four years out, those projections on people is still based on what we historically have done?
Yes.
So we're, we're forecasting a decline?
Yes. And that's all based on birth counts. Birth counts.
Right.
So less student, or less babies are being born in those years, I'm guessing. And it is based on historical. So I mean, if we're getting about 90% of those kids, if, you know, for some reason the, we get 95%, that number could, could be more.
So that .84% for this year is actual now or not? Is that actual?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. So you wanna, the blue column is 1819s. That's the one that we're hoping to confirm with Sue how close we are. And then 1920 is the next column. That's what's in this budget for next year. Any other questions on that?
But on the Region 5, when they were doing their calculations, and again for our building project, you know, they're saying, oh, we're gonna have this kind of interest. We're not seeing that there, but again, this is going off of our.
The zip, births and the zip codes. Yep.
Okay.
But that could change with our facilities. I mean, we could get, um, some of the open enrolled kids out coming back. We'll see.
Why would that be different? When they came in and did that tenure study to show that the enrollment is to be going up? And now this based on births and such, looks like there might be a decrease. Um, why would those numbers be different?
That study was done by, um.
Demographer.
Yes.
Reinhardt.
Yes.
People Reinhardt?
Yes.
Yeah.
Whereas this is all strictly data. They might take into account, um, some of the things that we have happening in our community. Whereas that other form, uh, formula is more just strictly formulas.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And Reinhardt was done quite a, it wasn't done recent, correct?
Three, four years ago.
Yeah.
But we have followed it quite very careful, very closely, like plus or minus five or something like that, right?
Yeah. That, I'd have to look back at that. I don't know how closely it's been, or how close it has been.
Okay.
So those are the revenue assumptions, um, the highlight, the large items. The expense assumptions, um, there is gonna be a decrease in the OPEB implicit subsidy draw that we can do. And that's all based on the Hill, Hillby Actuarial Report. It's not something we can control. The estimated increase in the transportation contract is in there. Any settled contracts costs are in there. And then an estimated increase in any unsettled costs are in there. The net reduction, uh, we presented at the last, or two meetings ago, I believe, a summary, um, so of staffing of approximately 22.53. That's in the budget. But just remember that, I mean, as we're rehiring and getting resignations, like those will all be updated at revision one. So this is as of a snapshot of time. And then we're gonna keep updating. Known replacement savings. So if we had somebody resign and then, um, we had a replacement and there was some savings there, that's in there. And then one of our, um, budget reductions was just, or changes, I should say, was coding Riverside's lease payment to capital. So, uh, Lane had proposed that all the sites' capital be frozen because we're going through all these facilities. And rather than damaging, you know, equipment, tables, and moving it, we're just gonna freeze it for now. That and the project does have some furniture fixtures and equipment in it. So they really shouldn't be buying new right now anyways. So with that savings, we were able to then code Riverside's lease payment that's just comes out of the general fund into capital. It will help save this year. So those are the big items. Uh, so then, when we went through all those changes, the 1920 preliminary budget with the general fund, um, unassigned, we're looking at excess of 31,499. Again, that's, uh, if we have some more savings with new hires, or, um, that number will change at revision one. And then each restricted line, you can see QCOM, um, staff development, those are all from, um, information that I get from Mr. Murtha. And safe schools, um, we, nothing really has changed there. If we do get that additional funding from the state, we could look at, um, some other options that we could do at the schools. But for right now, that's kinda just staying the same. Where we spend money on our security officer, um, and then part of our counselor's salary. That's what those funds are used for. And long-term facilities, um, based on the cash draws that ICS gave us, um, that we're gonna actually be banking a little bit. But I believe that we'll end up drawing more down with the facility projects, so that's okay. And capital, it's about the same. There's not a whole lot. Between sw- swapping out the site with Riverside payments, there's not a whole lot that's changed there as well.
With technical education there.
Mm-hmm.
It shows that it's zero beginning balance.
Yep.
And then, as a revenue. And then the expense. Is larger than the revenue. Then it says transfer in, 342.
Yep.
Or is it transferred in? Let me again, what is it?
It just comes from unassigned. So we don't receive enough funding to cover all of our technical education costs. And we, I don't think ever have. And that account, that restricted account can't go negative. So the unassigned covers the, the deficit. Which creates the transfer in, transfer out.
So the, but it doesn't show a deficit, but yet. It's coming from somewhere.
Yes. So if, if you look, those transfer, um, in and outs total, everything that's going out of unassigned is going into those other line items.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Other funds, just some of the highlights. So Fund 2, the budget really didn't change a whole.
Would you go back one?
Sure.
Um, if I'm, if I'm correct, those three numbers, the three, here, I've got it here, 364, the 426, and the 321 are equal to that 1.1 million dollars that says that we're deficit spending in the unassigned on the very first column. And so that's where those dollars are being s- put into. So they're paying for the expenses with career and tech ed that, uh, we don't live within the dollars that we generate. And so it comes out of the unassigned account. That's why that one has a negative balance and the other ones have a positive balance. So they equal out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, I think that's what you were asking.
Yes.
Yeah.
Why would, on the.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tech ed, thanks for bringing that. Why, why doesn't that balance?
Because we.
We receive enough revenue.
We get a percent of our expenses. And actually, we don't, we've been grandfathered in. So the amount that we are supposed to get is less than what, um, the amount was when they calculated it a different way.
So, and when you say expenses beyond wages and compensation?
Yep.
Materials or whatever?
Salaries, wages, supplies, anything, um, that qualifies under CTE, uh, travel, I think those are the big items. So if they're licensed CTE, we can code them to that line item.
And we get a percentage of what we spent.
Correct. But it's not 100%.
But if you cut in that area, then you're cutting revenue too.
Yes. And that's why when, um, we have new hires, I really try to push that if they don't have the license to get the variance. Cuz if they get a variance, we can still try to collect that reimbursement.
Okay, right. And now we just hired a new family and consumer science teacher who did have a license, which we were really excited to get a candidate. It was fully licensed in that area. So, um, I know that they work diligently to try to find those licensed personnel.
Um, and then on the other funds, so Fund 2, the budget really didn't change because, um, in July, you will set the rates for lunch prices. And then also, we still don't know what the federal and state reimbursements will be. So if they do go up, then we can adjust that in the revision. But for right now, it's just gonna basically stay the same. Uh, the building construction fund, that was, uh, based on a cash draw schedule from ICS. And they said they will be updating that, um, once, since we've received the bids. And then the high schools will come in, um, they will update that. So that should also be more accurate at the revision one. Uh, agency fund, Fund 9, that's used to account for the Paul Bunyan Co-op. Doesn't get reported anywhere. And then Fund 20 is our self-insurance, so medical and dental, same thing. There's no budget there, but it, we do have activity recorded there. Um, and then I always touch on the fund balance. So school board policy is a minimum of, um, 5 to 7% in the unassigned of the annual budget. The state recommends about three months. And with the projected balance of the 6,798,162 for next year that we're projected to end at, that is less than one month of operating expenses. So. Just wanna point that out.
And 5 to 7% were above, a little bit above that.
Correct. Correct.
But are, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah.
Are there any questions?
Do we get our, do we get our hands slapped if we don't? They don't give us any type of.
Yeah, yeah, they kinda make noise about it.
They recommend three months that you have, you know, should there be some kind of a catastrophic event or something like that? Yeah, that's one of the concerns that Mercy and I have visited about a lot, that we really try to, to raise the fund balance if we possibly can and.
And our auditors, if we were below the 5 to 7, yeah, they would note it in our report saying that, you know, your policy states this, you're not there. But we are, um, above the 5 to 7.
Above 5, okay.
Yeah. But we're not at what the state recommends.
Okay.
What, what percentage would that be?
25%.
25%?
Wow.
Do many school districts have that?
It varies. Um, I had a summary of schools that, they did a survey and it, I've, I do see some that have the twenties. But there's others that are similar to our policy.
Rich districts.
Are there any other questions? Okay. I guess we need a motion.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mercy.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Did you dock your boat just down the road?
I had to shower to get the chlorine off.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the 2019-20 preliminary budget.
Second.
Here we have first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Campbell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I didn't realize I had the next item. Um, this, next proposal is basically what was presented last meeting with Alyssa saying we're gonna go from the family to single payer. So now this credit cards, uh, software will, will allow families to log into one point and then pay for their fees, pay for food service, pay for whatever. So that's what this proposal is for. And it's, I know it notes in there that it refers to the existing merchant agreement. So our existing agreement, um, is used for our athletics.
So does this change our costs for this?
No.
No?
As far as, I guess I should.
What we pay for this service and.
They're very comparable. So right now, we use RevTrack for that. Um, the fees are very, very comparable.
But we might have more fees cuz more people will be using it?
Correct. However, we get charged per transaction. And so if they can do it all in one, our fees could be a little bit less because.
Oh, cuz they can, that's the benefit of it.
Yes.
Okay. So you need a motion?
Okay, we have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Blacklands. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, the approval of the Northern Pines Mental Health Service Agreement.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
Jen Johnson, the director for the Paul Bunyan Education Cooperative.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Nice to be here.
If you haven't met everybody.
No, I haven't.
So Jen comes to us from Robbins, Department of Schools.
Oh, okay.
Her first year.
Yep.
And loves it.
Yes, I do.
Excellent. No pressure, I'll come back next year. So Jen and I, we're, we've taken this year because with the mental health contracts, that was a lot of the responsibility that I had. Seriously. And, and the good news is from the contracts that are being proposed, there's no change or increase in the cost. Uh, overview of our mental health services right now with Northern Pines. Uh, we have 37 mental health professionals and practitioners that are working across, um, early childhood through the high school. They continue to provide us tremendous service and access to immediate crisis response when we need it. Uh, we've had a partnership with Northern Pines, uh, for over 25 years. So we're one of the first school districts to bring mental health in, as those, or surrounding members. Um, they are a community mental health-based agency, which means they have access to different funding from the state. So if you look at the contract that we use for services, um, the, the dollar amount we're paying is to ensure that children have access to mental health services, even if they're uninsured or, um, underinsured. But what happened is we keep track of that. We get reports from there regularly. Our contracted amount depleted in early January, which means basically Northern Pines has provided all that service free to the public school district, um, for that remaining time. They can do that because of the, uh, community-based mental health agency that's receiving those funds from the state. So they apply for those grants and they continue then to infuse it. So the good news with the three contracts, and they're the same contracts with the Brainy Learning Center. We have a unique thing with the Brainerd High School and the lunch fee, so that's the one. And then our overall mental health services. They look exactly the same as last year, other than updated dates. And the cost remains the same as the previous year. Which was really nice, knowing we actually depleted our amount in January. We're also very aware of how critical access to mental health is at this point in time. I'd be very concerned if we did not have the access that we do.
Question, do they, are we still doing the, um, surveys of users? Cuz you used to report that to us.
Well, and here's the hard part about that. So, um, because of the timing, you wanna have a contract in place by July 1st, they're wrapping up their year as well. So that, all those data and surveys. So I'm guessing we're gonna see that, um, annual report more towards the end of July, first part of August.
Okay, so it will come before the board.
So they do the, they do the students.
We'll see you again maybe.
Student, family, staff, stakeholder surveys. They actually then will also report out to you the type of services that have been, um, accessed. One change, two, from a third-party billing standpoint, and you just, if I'm talking too much.
No, go ahead.
Okay, next.
I'm learning a lot.
Perfect. Should spend more time together. The third parties standpoint, um, because the co-op has that ability to get, uh, medical assistance reimbursement. But from the mental health side, the only services that we're still billing are the individual psychotherapy, group psychotherapy. Because from a skills-based, our licensed special ed staff or school counselors can provide that work. So that special ed service from a special ed side is still being third-party billed. But that's pretty minimum. Just again, because of the access and the early access, I think, that our students and families are having.
So Heidi, did you say that you have Northern Pines going out to Forest View or not?
We do. Actually, our largest staff are housed at Forest View and the high school.
Okay.
There are eight permanent staff onsite at Forest View. And I wanna say the permanent staff at the high school, I haven't had last count. Know there's at least 10. Uh, but then on top of that, they have staff that are coming in and out.
Okay.
Just because of the needs, as needs fluctuate. So total staff that we have on record, um, that are accessing or coming in our buildings are 37 professionals and practitioners. So if you look at the cost of your contract and that level of services.
How many were there when you started that job?
So I was one of the first Northern Pines, and I was number two.
Number two.
So I was brought in there as a supervisor or practitioner. I was hired as a professional to work in the basement down here. And then got hired to go start a program at Franklin.
And now there's 37 of them.
Yeah, so that's, it's 26 years ago now. Young whippersnapper. I was 13.
So those people, how many are over at Forest View?
There are eight permanent staff that house at Forest View.
So they have.
Additional staff that come in and out based on need.
And when they come in and out, where are they housed?
They have, we actually have mental health offices in Forest View and the high school. And in our new building plans too, you'll notice that there is a spot designated for mental health. Right now in our elementaries, a lot of times they're meeting, um, in the collaborative worker space, or they're trying to meet in a small conference room. So we don't have them permanently housed at the elementaries because they come in and out for groups depending on the need of the students.
So are, they're there 100% of the time, these eight? They're full-time at Forest View?
At Forest View and the high school.
Or split between the high school?
Nope, there's eight at Forest View.
That's their full-time?
That's their full-time assignments.
Okay.
They are full-time school-based mental health professionals or practitioners.
When, when we get, um, the counseling updates, I guess we don't really hear about that. I wonder if, do they work, I would imagine, pretty closely with each other?
They do. And that's one of the things we've challenged back. There's a much healthier relationship and I think an exchange occurring at the high school. Um, where you really see Northern Pines kind of doing all the mental health and leading some of those mental health or group initiatives. Where at Forest View, they haven't accessed as much. They're still operating somewhat isolated. And that's the challenge that Principal Anderson's bringing back is what can we do to alleviate some of that? So the guidance counseling staff isn't taking that on.
Yeah.
And streamlining systems, where other than them dealing with a suicide crisis, we should be having, you know, cuz they are a lot paid mental health professional in the building. So, um, I know John and his team spent quite a bit of time, right, when school got out, they were looking at how they can change that access. One of the immediate changes is guidance counselors have been doing, um, an advisor-advisee. And they've looked at as their way to stop that and look at getting access to different kids and, and combining that or looking at that. But if you talk to Northern Pine staff, they also like, their caseloads are full.
I mean, that paints a whole different picture to have eight, if I'm understanding right.
Yes.
Eight full-time.
They have four on the 5-6 side and four on the 5-8 side. And they're running groups every hour and doing individual and follow-up and.
Plus a collaborative worker too, correct?
There's one collaborative worker at Forest View and their primary designee right now, some mental health, but really working on attendance and getting kids to the building and, um, till that. Where our collaborative workers in the elementary are much more mental health-type focused, reaching out to the county and getting access and connecting those family services. And collaborative worker in the elementary is typically the one getting in harder than a worker to come.
But there's no full-time in the elementary, Northern Pines?
They have a full-time professional supervisor that kinda coordinates the care.
No.
Spends a lot of time at Riverside. And I would say probably offices there the most, but they are very, the elementary staff is very mobile. And they come into early childhood and over to the learning center.
Jen, is that what you did in Robbinsdale? You did the same job?
I was an assistant director.
Oh.
Similar.
It's one fund they have a knowledge.
We, uh, just had a meeting with Paul Bunyan Education Co-op within the last month. And had just a phenomenal presentation about some of the autism spectrum, no, yeah.
Yep.
Autism spectrum disorder. And, um, some of the, uh, rising numbers in special education. And Jen at that meeting, um, agreed to bring some of the professionals to a board meeting, either at the end of the summer or early fall, to give the board an update of some of the numbers that we see across our region, and particularly in the Brainerd District. And so Jen will be back, um, with some of the specialists in the district to talk about those things as well. And we're really excited that she's so willing to come and to give those kinds of reports to our boards as well. To keep you informed on some of the challenges that, that schools are being faced with today and families are being faced with. And how we can work together on behalf of these kids. So. We're looking forward to that. So.
That'd be good to have.
So she'll be back a lot, if it looks, yeah.
Then we'll know who you are next time.
What was that?
We'll know who you are next time.
Any other questions about our? Any other questions about our contracts?
I know we have looked at bidding this out before, and did look at that, do you think we should, or?
Yeah, it's at any point in time, that's a, a board's directive, if you want to go through the RFP process. No, I encourage, I mean, it's a healthy thing to do, and I think you have multiple providers in the area. You know, the difference with providers when they're RFP, with Northern Pines being the community-based mental health, they have access to that state dollar for other agencies that they're private. But that could come up, we, but I would say we have quality of mental health in our area. And I think- Because we have Greater Min who works in more the early childhood pre-K areas, that's another agency.
Yep, Cory.
Yeah, Greater Min works in.
Yeah. A lot of times, it's, it's coming through that special ed side, so they do a lot of work at Head Start. But there's another mental health service provider that works in those early stages in conjunction with Northern Pines. Northern Pines has been much more of our K high school, but they have assisted just because of certain crises that exist within our district.
And then they have not increased their fee, yeah, that's great.
No, that's, but that would be something if you want to discuss. I would encourage if you're going to do that, probably a year's worth of, when you look at if we're going to change a provider, I think that was some of the concern that happened last time, is just the relationships with kids and preparing and doing that. Not that you can't do that, and not that other agencies have it.
Heidi, how difficult would it be to do a comparison or two in a, in a different geographic area in the state? You know, I mean, would we be able, could we see what another district is, or co-op is spending on dollars for similar size? You know, as a comparison, or no?
We could, in the difference, so right now, we have a co-located model. So that's one of the reasons our costs in our area are so low, and that's what our member districts have. So when I say member districts, that's the members attached to the whole, Peak, Mont, Pillager, Crosby, Pine River, Aiken. We can, Northern Pines right now encompasses five counties of service, that they are the community-based. Todd, Morrison, Wadena, Crowing, and Cats. Got them all. But we could, if you talk to a lot of our, you know, our regional groups, so even if you go further south towards Saint Cloud, they were struggling to get mental health, access to mental health. And some of them then hired mental health professionals onto their staff. Onto the special ed side of staff, and then basically you're paying that salary and benefits and then generating. There's lots of different models, where we could try to see what's similar. I'm sure Northern Pines, because of their work, could have access. Our size of students is very similar than to a metro district. The only other comparison we could probably go get is Forehead. Otherwise, we'd be looking metro. We could, Jen could do some homework, Jen.
The practice I came from, it was a district double the size, and there was only one mental health provider at each high school, and then one at each of the five middle schools. So this is an incredible opportunity that we're providing for our students and our families, I believe, with the model that is currently working in the Brainerd Public Schools.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Heidi and Jennifer.
I think I might be the next one. Nope, it's Cory.
Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a first from Director Haglin, a second from Director Nystrom. Any other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the Baxter Park and Recreation Budget. Cory, you're already there.
Here I am. Yeah, before you tonight is the tenth annual, I think, budget for the Joint Powers Agreement we have with the City of Baxter for Community Education to run their Parks and Rec Department. At a meeting in May, the Joint Powers Board met. Members from both organizations reviewed the budget and agreed to both pass it on to both entities, which are required by the terms of the agreement to adopt that budget by July first. So there it is. Represents pretty much status quo. Our numbers are very similar to what they have been over the last few years, and we, everyone felt comfortable with the budget before you.
Okay, thank you.
So move approval of Baxter Park and Rec, JPA budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Campbell, second from Director Nystrom. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Approval of the contract for the fiscal year twenty nineteen audit services with Clifton Larson Allen.
So in your packet is the engagement letter from CLA. It is a zero percent increase in fees from last year. We've been very satisfied with their services, so just looking for approval of that letter.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Nystrom, second from Director Nelson. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That was an easy one. Approval of the property and general liability renewal, workers' comp renewal, and cyber liability insurance policy.
So with our insurance, we are represented by Weisenegger Engle Insurance. We do have six policies. We did add crime last year for the first time, to kind of coincide with the cyber liability that we also added. The renewal on those are in your packet, so it's, you know, a zero percent on the crime and a point-three percent on the cyber. Our workers' comp just continues to decline. We went from a point-eight-two, I believe, to a point-seven-one, which is awesome. So our, our premium just keeps going down. There was an option to have a fixed cost, and I spoke to Reed about it, and, you know, our admin group. The fixed amount would be higher than what the premium is in the packet that's proposed. However, there's a premium that could be returned if you keep your losses at a lower level. But after we were discussing it, Jenny made a very good point. She is kind of concerned with what's happening with facilities, that who knows, I mean, maybe we will have some more claims than usual. So we don't necessarily want to have that fixed. We want to go with a lower amount right now, just to make sure. So that is in there. And then the other one, the property and land marine, it's a two-point-one percent increase, which is not bad. So with all of that, just asking for your approval on the renewal of all of those. And then I did put a note in there that we did add a builder's risk policy effective June third, because construction was started. And Craig found this phenomenal. It's over a four-year term, it doesn't, it's fixed, they can't change it. So even if we have a claim happen, that amount stays the same, so. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Marcy, have we ever had a client, or a crime claim?
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, hope not to.
So this is just a standard kind of thing to do?
Well, especially with everything that's happening, that's why he recommended it last year, because we didn't have it. And there's a lot of cyber crime happening, so.
Yeah.
It's a good policy to have.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Haglin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries unanimously. Approval of the MREA membership renewal.
I can take this one, and what I'm proposing today is to renew our membership with the Minnesota Rural Education Association for two thousand nineteen, twenty. I'm happy to say that the dues have not gone up at all this year. They remain the same at twenty-five hun, what's it, twenty-five hundred dollars for the coming year. I must say that I think that MREA does just a wonderful job advocating for us at the legislature and providing updates for us regionally, and that support. And I wholeheartedly ask the Board of Education to support this renewal.
Sounds good. Is there a motion?
I'll move the approval of the MREA membership.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion?
I was just curious on the twenty-five hundred, what is that legislative fee? So there's a base of eleven thousand?
The base fee is eleven thousand?
No, eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred, but yeah.
Yeah, eleven hundred, I'm sorry, yeah. And then the legislative fee is fourteen hundred dollars. And I believe that that's the lobbying and so on with, with our legislative members. If there's a conference that they have for MREA and having some of the legislators come in, those types of things. But they really, they really are out there on our behalf and just do a phenomenal job for greater Minnesota.
I'll so move the approval.
We already got that, I think you're-
Yes.
Director Nelson and Director Blacklance have already made the motion. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Approval of the MSBA Association dues.
The MSBA dues, as well as, as all of you know, as Minnesota School Board members, they provide wonderful services to, throughout the state as well, and great information to the boards regarding changes, laws, advocating at the legislature as well. I'm really happy to say that this year, our dues have not gone up very much as well. They've, are increased by two-hundred-seventy-seven dollars from the past year. The majority of the dues at twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-thirty-eight dollars are for the association dues themselves. And then there is a seven-hundred-dollar fee in there for policy service renewal. And so that's working with legal counsel and such to make sure that MSBA policies are in line with the laws that are approved at the legislature, and to update policies. And they really give us the red-line version that we bring forward to you for updating our policies to keep them in compliance. And, and I, too, would recommend this wholeheartedly, that we support and we remain active in the Minnesota School Board Association.
What percentage of their policies have we adopted now? I know we are way behind, but.
You know, I don't know what the percentage is, but I do know that the majority of all of our policies come straight from the MSBA changes and recommendations that they have. There are some of our policies that we update to make it more current with us, just at a local level, but still remaining in compliance with the law.
I think for, for a while, there were only like fifty percent of theirs, or something like that.
And, and there are some of their policies that don't seem to apply that much to the school district, and so we don't necessarily feel that we have to have all of the policies unless needed. If something comes up and they have a policy that we can use as a draft or to approve, to bring forward to you for approval, just as is, we certainly will. That'll be our first, that'll be our first opportunity to, to try to meet that policy, because you've already paid for the dues for those updated policies. Yeah, and there's some times that we'll have our legal counsel even look at some of the verbiage, but for the most part, we're really pleased with the work that they do.
I'll move to approve the MSBA dues for this next calendar year.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Haglin, a second from Director Campbell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now the approval for the second reading of Policy six-one-five. Here comes Heidi.
Here we come. Really, all the policy does is bring in line our language to the changes, minor changes that happened in both state and federal guideline for American with Disabilities Act. And idea for special education. So it was really, there's no content change, other than some verbiage changes. So it's not a very exciting review, but, any questions?
I haven't had any comments on it.
No. No. We haven't, it's not a real- Yeah, okay. I'll move the approval. Second, whatever.
If a first from Director Campbell.
Sure.
And you're going to be second, Nelson, second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the contract ratification for the principal's contract for nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one.
So it's actually very exciting. I think Marcy and Jenny and I have had many meetings and many calculations, so to be able to come to resolution is nice. And our goal when we started was to get a four-year. So if you remember, you approved the seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, the last board meeting. So this will be for the upcoming school year. Just kind of some major points to hit of, of the negotiations. We did make a change with the health insurance, which is what we're trying to do across all of our groups. So our principal group was the group that led about a decade ago with going to the high deductible plan, actually almost fourteen years ago, which was supposed to set the stage for the rest of the district to follow. And that did not happen. So they've kind of been very proud that that, that's what they've hung on to, that they were the leader of that, that movement. But to move that needle even further, they now have gone from the three thousand, six thousand deductible to a four thousand, eight thousand dollar deductible, which is a significant savings to us. From the, the VIBA reimbursement, they're still only going to get reimbursed at the same rate of the three-six, not the four-eight. So that was a significant change, so that'll give us some cost savings in the years to come. In addition, they made a change that every new administrator coming in is going to go on to our Plan G, which is where we're trying to move all members to. So our new administrators come in will be on that Plan G, which is similar to what our secretaries and interpreters have right now, and they'll have the HSA matching plan. In addition, they, another big significant change is, there's severance right now has been going into a four oh three, and they agreed to have that severance go into an HRA. What that means is, when it was a four oh three severance, it would come out of our general fund. Now with that HRA, it's going to come out of the OPEB funding. So that will not be dollars coming out of our general fund moving forward. So based on, yes?
Sorry, just on the Plan G move, you said all admin, or is it all principals, or how do we define admin?
So it's, it's going to be the prin, this is the principal's contract, so those who fall into the principals. So you're looking at principals and assistant principals in this particular contract settlement.
And it'll be any administrators or principals coming in following after July first of this year?
Well, we have the, you have the non-principals group, so that contract hasn't been negotiated. So when you look at like a director of special ed-
Did I say that wrong?
Yeah.
Oh, I just meant anybody that comes into the principal's group after July first will be on Plan G. So the other change is to our principals that we have currently in this contract.
Yeah, so the, the four thousand, eight thousand is what's the change to the current existing? They're going from a three-six to a four-eight?
And that'll start in January, right?
Yes, because we can't make that, that health insurance shift till January.
That's right. Sorry about that.
Yeah, just because-
The new principals would be January, probably, too? Or is that July?
Well, it'd be, yeah, so the thing, right now, we don't have one. So unless somebody suddenly resigns, which seems to be happening, we'll pray that it doesn't happen with a small group of, we have eleven, we have eleven principals and four assistant principals. So we have fifteen principals who fit under this contract. So those were the major changes. That's what justified, when you look at the percentage and the larger percentage going on that first year, it's because of the massive change in health insurance and the cost savings that'll occur. So. Questions?
I'll move the approval of the contract ratification for the two thousand nineteen, twenty-one principal's contract.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first from Director Nystrom and a second from Director Blacklance. Is there any more further discussion?
I, I just want to say that I've given this a lot of thought, and I know our principals work really hard. I know they work really hard, and I'm grateful that they're changing their, their insurance. But I'm having a problem with the increase being so different from other groups.
You know, it, it actually isn't aligned, if you look what happened with the secretaries and the interpreters. They just spread it out differently. So the principal group really wanted it on the first, and that's why they settled that way. So took less on the eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, put it on this year, and then settled back on the other. But it is something, when we sat through negotiations, we really wrestled with significantly.
Yeah.
And, and I know- And, and I know Tom sat with us a couple of times, but we continue to do that costing spreadsheet as we enter in, and we're doing that with all of our negotiation groups, so they can see all that cost savings. And if you look at the overall cost savings to the health insurance, which again is the precedence we're setting, and a lot of people hold up that insurance package to say we should all be treated that way. So now the fact that the administrative group is saying, nope, we'll go to this Plan G.
But it's only new principals, not the current principals, so, yeah, okay.
But you do have some retirements coming.
Yes.
Hopefully not resignations, but retirements are on the horizon. But it is setting that stage. And so from interpreters, secretaries, and now the principals' group have done that, that move, so.
Thank you, and Jenny and Marcy, again, for all the hard work on that. That's a tough one.
I can say it's not the funnest part of our jobs. No. Maybe I shouldn't have said that publicly, but it's not very fun, but it goes well.
I've got a few more gray hairs.
Okay. Any further discussion, anybody? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. Aye.
All right. Motion carries five to one, with Director Nelson opposed. Informational, we have a finance report. Bet that's Marcy again.
All right. So in your packet is the finance report as of April. And if you take out the outliers, so the construction fund and then our refunding the debt service funds, we are at about seventy-one-point-seven-seven percent. And then last year, taking those out, we were at seventy-three-point-two-three. So we're, we're doing well, right on target. And then I just wanted to give an update. We did have a meeting with our transportation contractors, and we hope next month to have a contract presented. We'll see. We have another, we need to visit some more. And then I'm not sure if Lane went to the City of Baxter bid opening for the improvements, but I did get an email update. I wasn't able to attend yesterday, but they did, the bids did come in sixteen-point-two percent higher than what they were saying our cost allocation would be. So that, for that, that means three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. So I just wanted to give that update. And Trevor was very nice and laid it all out in email and said, you know, part of it was timing of the bid and part of it is just the timeframe. We have a pretty tight timeframe to try to get it done before school opens. So there was a number of factors in there that he believes of why it came in higher than what they had.
So that was for what part of the project out there?
Jasperwood, Mapleton, it's the whole package that you guys had approved, yeah.
And we're paying all of that increase?
So the sixteen percent was applied across the board, and then he gave me the number that our new number would be. Just wanted to give an update on that. And that's all I got.
So what was the difference between the old and the new number again?
About three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, if I round up.
And Marcy, that's for next year, right? That it'd be finished by September of two thousand twenty?
I believe they're going to start in July. Yeah.
It'll be this year?
The Forest View piece will be done by the time school starts in August.
Yes, and that's why part of it was.
The Forest View Middle School piece will be done by the time school starts in August, at the end of August. And then they'll still continue to work on Jasperwood and all those updates over the next year.
Okay.
So that was kind of why they thought, just because of how tight the timeline was, that may have been why it came in higher. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcy.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thanks for coming back from vacation.
Yeah.
Superintendent's report.
Just a couple of things, as I shared with a couple of you as I got here today. Ten of us had the fortunate opportunity the last two and a half days to have extensive professional development sponsored by Sourcewell. And there were, I believe, five or six different schools from Region Five that were represented there that had whole teams of work there to talk about strategic planning for academic improvement in our, in our districts. And so it was really interesting, because Monday, we were able to spend the entire day just looking at some of the data that we have, some of the work that we've done through the Principal Academy and with Katie Pakell. And to, we had a whole outline of eleven different items, I believe, to go through that day that we wanted to be able to address, and I think we got through four of them. But we had just extensive conversation and opportunity to visit about it. Then yesterday, we had training. Peter DeWitt, thank you, came and talked and just did a really phenomenal job about talking about closing the achievement gap for our kids as well. And so we took a lot of the knowledge that we learned there and spent a few more hours after he was done presenting with our team again and how that would apply to our strategic planning as well. And so we were able to get a few more of those items on our eleven-point list that we were able to talk about and to communicate with. You know, some of the, one of the areas, along with student achievement, we're talking about building relationships amongst our team and then also moving the academic performance and such forward within our district and looking at a system and how we move, continue to, to make this great district even better than it is today. And we spent a great deal of time on relationships, because it seems like during the school year, you don't have a lot of time to really build that, those bonds and to build that teaming and to get to know each other on a personal level as well as a professional level. And so we spent a great deal of time then as well. Today, our presentation this morning, Pequot Lakes through Sourcewell and through some of their, what's the name of the?
SEED.
No, that's not what I was thinking about, not action learning projects, but through their action. Alternative career paths. They have been doing some work in the Pequot Lakes Schools using the SEED program, which is looking at equity throughout their, throughout their district. Not only cultural equity, but equity amongst gender, equity for financial equity, but every aspect of equity that they have K-12 within their district. And they went through, they had a couple of different panels that spoke to us about work that they're doing within their buildings. They also had us play some games so we could look at how are we doing in each of our districts regarding equity. And it was just really a moving experience. And so when we got done with that, we went back into our closed session with our team of ten again, and I, I see Tawny smiling and Heidi smiling, because it was just wonderful. We got to do some more work. And so when we left today, a little afternoon, we've set some more dates to do some more planning prior to our continuous improvement process at the beginning of August. And we hope to do a lot of work yet in, in the month of August. And then one thing that we would like to do is to have some kind of a retreat with the Board of Education to bring this information to you that we've learned and get, and to get some additional input and recommendations from you as to how you would like us to move forward with some of these initiatives over the coming year. And we, like I said, out of our eleven steps that we were going to do, we probably got through six of them quite thoroughly, but we, we still have work to do, and we're all really committed to doing that work and really excited about it. So I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Education for allowing us to partner with Sourcewell and to partner with the neighboring schools within Region Five and to continue to move this incredible district forward and how honored we are to be part of, of this process. It was really rewarding. Tawny, when we came in today, she said it was wonderful, and I think that's, that's the perfect adjective to describe what we've experienced over the last two and a half days together. So it was truly wonderful. Speaking of Sourcewell, I'm not going to give a lot of details because I don't have all the details, and there hasn't been a public announcement yet. But I have shared with the board that over the course of the last couple of months, there have been some scholarships and grants being awarded through Sourcewell for different programs in communities. And through Crowing Energized, Essentia Health, Central Lakes College, and ISD one-eighty-one, we have been getting together several times to write a grant application for a mental health grant through Sourcewell, where we look at reducing the stigma of mental health. And I heard word yesterday that our project was recommended for full funding, but it has not passed the board, that it needs board approval before it's anything final. And so when, and if that happens, there will be a great big public announcement within the next month or so, and we'll be doing a lot of media coverage, and we're really excited to be partnering throughout our community to, to reduce the stigma of mental health and to provide services to children and families in our community. And it's just so fun to have these entities, to have the college and the K-12 and the hospital and everybody working together to do this. So that's really a neat piece. Yeah, so we're excited for the public announcement, because we'll have a lot more details, we'll have numbers and timeframe and all that at that time when we find out what exactly was it, what was, is being approved. We talked a little bit about the transportation agreement already, and so we hope at the July meeting to be able to bring that forward. And we had a really good discussion with the people from Rikers. The relationship that the district has with Rikers right now is wonderful, and we, we look forward to continuing that partnership that we have. And lastly, as I said in my memo, it's hard to believe that this is the last meeting of the eighteen-nineteen school year. And it was the last memo that, last week that I sent in the school year, and now we're on to two thousand nineteen-twenty, and we look forward to doing great work together in nineteen-twenty and thereafter. So that's the end of my report. Yeah. Yeah.
I just want to extend an invitation to you, so you can get it on your calendars now, but I'll send a formal invite out. So in July, we're going to be hosting the Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board here, which is a board I sit on, so they're in charge of all the licensing for the state of Minnesota. So Pelsby was the previous board of teaching and then licensing through MDE, and they've merged together. In July, we have a two-day retreat, and so they typically do metro and then outstate. So with Lane's approval, we're going to host them here. So Thursday, we'll be on a full training day, that eighteenth, but on Friday, we'll have a formal board meeting. It's going to be housed right here in our boardroom. That's open to the public. They're also going to be inviting local legislators to be joining us. So we have a nine o'clock start, but typically we go into a closed session first because of discipline matters and things before the board, but then starting at ten. So I would really encourage, if any of you can join us, one of the reasons they're excited to come up here is because of what's happening within Brainerd Public Schools. So.
Day in July?
It's Thursday, well, July nineteenth. Friday, July nineteenth, will actually be our board meeting. That will house right here in this room. But just if you want to earmark that date. And they haven't finalized the details for kind of a meet and greet with the legislators. We're looking at that probably earlier in that morning. So I'll keep you posted, but if you're in town and.
What's the name of the board again?
Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board. They're responsible for all teacher licensure. They're also responsible for accrediting all the educational licensing programs in the state of Minnesota.
So P-E-L?
L-S-B, yeah, so Pelsby. You know, education, we like our acronyms.
Yes.
So, but it'd be a nice chance for you to meet them, yeah. So I just, sorry to interrupt, but put that out there. I'll do a formal invite.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay. For your report, too. Tomorrow, we have project oversight, July fourth. The offices are closed. Project oversight again on July ninth. And the eleventh. Our bids for Brainerd High School at two PM here. And July fifteenth is our next special school board meeting at six PM.
And speaking of that, Janet, will you advertise the BHS bid opening as a public meeting or a special board meeting in case? You should have known it, never mind. Never mind, she's so efficient. Great.
Karen, I have a question. Just for the public, and I've been gone for two weeks, so forgive me, but I'd just like to know, have you signed your contract for the next three years?
It is all signed.
Because I think the public needs to know that.
It's all signed and ready to go, so, yeah.
Okay.
It's all done.
Great. Sorry for asking, but you didn't have it in your report, so.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I should have, I kind of assumed that you knew that, so, yeah, very good.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's funny.
Yes, so moved.
Thank you. We have a first from Blacklance, second from Campbell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
That would've been bad if you left and then that's all.
I know.
You bet. That was so funny when you texted it. I'm like, oh, my goodness. There for a while, it just.